Meeting to order, and if you'll all rise. Ms. Escobedo-Badola, if you'll lead us in the
Oh, boy.
In the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. School Committee Chair Report, that would be me. I want to thank all of the participants on Saturday for Ms. Jeffrey's scarecrow endeavor. I'm told by Committee Woman, Mrs. Fleming, that there were how many?
A thousand four.
A thousand four. Let's have a round of applause for that. That's... I stopped in there Saturday morning, and there was Principal Renda drilling into the ground with his electric drill, making the holes for the scarecrow posts. So, yeah, that was a lot of work. We appreciate it, and maybe next year we'll break that record. They got a thousand?
Thousand four.
Four, and they needed 4,000?
They needed...
Well, 3,000 and something, right?
Thirty-eight twelve was the word.
Right, right.
But next year, well, I think what my thought was that maybe they should put these into storage, start it in August next year, and maybe we'll have a thirty-eight fifteen.
Yeah, that'd be good. All right, moving on. Our Resource Committee, Mr. Stevens.
Nothing at this time.
Thank you.
Oh, that would be, no, under school building needs, I will...
Okay.
Yeah, well, next.
Well, that's next, go ahead.
School building needs. We're going to meet Thursday afternoon, Mr. Jokla, at Crocker Elementary, to discuss the roof, at 1:30.
Crocker Roof, good. They're currently working on the Crocker Roof.
Yeah, they're just starting that today. It's an MSBA visit.
Visit coming, yeah.
Okay. Chairperson Craigin, Policy Committee?
Yeah, we had a really, really good meeting on, I believe it was Thursday, and we have before you a policy which I'm going to ask members of our Policy Committee, Juana and Marisa, if we can just do our policy, vote on this before, and this would be also requesting coming, doing this out of order. So, we do have to approve this as a full committee, but it needs to go through our Policy Subcommittee first. So, since we do not have it on our action items, yes, we do, number sixteen dash seven four four, sixteen seventeen, I'm going to ask if we can take, we can certainly wait until then and pass it as a full, as a Subcommittee and then a full Committee, if that works for everyone. And again, this is in our packet, it's the Teaching and Intervention Alcohol, Tobacco, and Drugs. We are also going to, this will also take the place of one of our policies, which we found by perusing, and I feel like the public should see this more often. So, this is our policy book, so approximately three inches, and this comes with the Mass General Laws, this is only Mass General Laws on schools, so it's a solid inch, it's very tiny type. So, we did find in our policy book a policy that would be totally redundant with this new policy. This has to do with the curriculum that we do, and I think, may I ask, Juana and Marisa, did you have a chance to review everything that our principal sent?
Yes, I just...
Great, okay. So, that's our policy, we're, that's the policy before us tonight, we will be figuring out a meeting time for next time, and then moving forward on some other policies that need some updating. Anything else to add, Marisa and Juana?
No.
Okay.
Yes, okay.
And I want to, also, I want to thank Patty Pickers, because she's the superintendent's Administrative Assistant, and man, she is on top of it all. So, without Patty and without Paul G. Quinto, we're getting our feet wet on some of this, so we really thank, you know, the both of you for helping guide us, because this is how the school runs, this, I don't know, seven-pound binder, and how many pounds of children and grownups, but we all move together, so thank you.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Craigin, we have a policy already on the books?
Correct.
So, we're going to have to...
Well, what we're going to, yeah, what we'll do next time is, we're going to pass this, because there's a deadline in question, and then, we don't have to do multiple readings on deletion, do we? Because we don't...
If I might, please, share.
Yeah.
The last statement in this is cross-reference School Committee Policy fifty-four oh four. This new policy will replace five-two-two-seven.
That's what I was, okay.
So, it's right here.
All right. I knew we had to do some work on that.
Yeah, so, we lose a page and we gain two pages, but that's okay.
Okay.
It's important stuff.
Any further questions? Ms. LaBelle Pierce, Regarding Student Support Committee, Subcommittee, I should say.
There's nothing due to report, we rule it again on November seventh.
Thank you. School Personnel Committee, Mr. Jokla, we're still in the process of negotiating with the nutrition folks, still ongoing.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have to report. What do we have left? Student Report? We have no Student Report tonight.
No Student Report.
Okay.
But I think our students are, I know they're very much involved in athletics, and I know there were games today and tonight, so they're probably...
There'll be games, okay.
I know there's a soccer game at Crocker Field right now, and Mr. Velasquez is on volleyball, and they were playing this afternoon, which, 5:00, I think they start, so we have active participants.
Thank you. Before we go any further, I'd like to ask us all in the viewing audience at home for a moment of silence with the loss of a Pittsburgh student, 23 years, young, taken much too young, Tyler Dupree, whose services were held today, and if you would, a moment of silence at his passing. Thank you. Staff, Student Presentations.
Okay. Seems like the summer was a long time ago, but it was, it did come, and it was an exciting summer, and we had Camp Journeys, and I'm going to have Eva Kelly come up from Camp Journeys, and I was going to do all of the names, but I'm going to let you do the names, that way you're sure and they're all there. So, students will be joining us, add chairs if you have to, but it's important that the names of these students get said loud and clear, so everybody at home knows who they are.
Can we introduce them sound?
They can, just, there are people here listening to you, and then there are all kinds of people at home watching you on television, so I want them to know who you are.
Well, we have a nice story to go to for you. Thank you, Dina.
So, why don't we start with each of you introducing yourselves?
Hold on, Ms. Eva, can you stop for a minute so they can talk first?
Yeah. So, introduce yourself, and which school you're from, okay?
So, Molly, my name is Molly, and I'm in the third grade. I go to the school at Ringgold. We study the ocean at Camp Journeys. We learn about animals like starfish and sand dollars. Sand dollars were my favorite thing to study. My favorite activity was writing poems, because I liked to be creative. My favorite field trip was the beach, because we collected shells in my dad's camp. I've been to Journey's Camp for three years. I really like Journey's Camp. I like, I really like Journey's Camp.
And we have some of Molly's journals going around, and some artifacts from all the students that attended. This is Rembrandt Tebow, and he goes to Rhinegold Elementary School, third grade, and he has a few words to say also.
My name is Rem. I've been at Camp Journey for three years. It really helps you learn. Every year, there's a new topic. This year, I learned about the ocean. We went to the aquarium to read, and you were in the aquarium, and there's from land. At Crocker School, we went on hikes. We read stories about the ocean. We got to do things with music and pop music. I think Camp Journey is important, because you get to learn extra stuff during the summer. I love Camp Journey, because it's really fun. There is a lot to explore.
This is Frank Price. He's part of the family, where you go to school.
I go to school at Ringgold Elementary.
So, it sounds like you're a part of the summer camp.
I liked about the field, I liked about the field trip for Journey's Summer Camp, and the field trip that I liked was the beach, because we found crabs and collected crabs.
And the name is Frank Price. I just want to make sure everybody at home knows these names. They're going to hear them for many years.
This is Lucy and William Barna.
Hi, my name is Chelsea Warner, and I'm in the third grade. I've been going to, I go to school at South Street Elementary, and I've been going to summer camp for two years at Crocker Elementary. Okay, my favorite part was going hiking outside in the woods. We would collect things like acorns, like moss, leaves, and rocks, and when we finally got back, we would go straight to the playground.
And this is William, he's in kindergarten at South Street. Do you want to tell them what you like doing?
Hello, my name is William Barna. I am in South Street School, Elementary. My teacher is Mrs. Gerard, and I went to summer camp for two years.
One, one.
One year, and my favorite field trip, my favorite part about summer camp was the field trip. The field trip gave us information about sea animals.
All right.
Great. Got Tim in the back.
Come on up. Do you want to stand? This is Adrian and Calliana. Adrian's going to speak for the family. That's their brother.
Hey, Adrian.
Hi, my name is Calliana Moreno, and I've been in Journey's Summer Camp for four years. In Journey's Summer Camp, I learned a lot, a lot about the ocean. We learned how littering is not the best for sea animals, also how driftwood is so soft and how it's smoothed by the sand. The field trips helped me understand what we learned, because we got to, because we got to feel the driftwood and also got to see the sea animals' habitat.
Very good. So, we ran Journey's, can I run the slideshow? Just quick, I know we're running out of time.
No, no, go ahead.
Went through the entire month of July this year, Monday through Thursday, 8:30 to 12:30, and then on Thursdays, we extended the day till four, so we could go on field trips and really enjoy them, because the year before, we were really crunched. So, we studied the ocean, we went to the equatorium in Worcester, we went to the aquarium in Boston, we went to Winger Sheik Beach, the first time some of our students got to go to the beach, and had all that wonderful support from the show office, helping us with chaperones, and then we went to Davis's Farm Land also the last week. So, all week, all summer long, they were studying the ocean, we used the Roots of Breeding Seeds of Science Ocean Unit, and they were able to learn a lot, Monday through Wednesday, and then actually see animals in their habitats and explore them on Thursdays. Do you guys have any questions for any of my friends here? I have a question. So, you all went to Winger Sheik Beach? Everyone here did, yes. So, was it surprising how many sand dollars there are there? You could just see them all right under there. Did you pick any of them up?
I did.
Yeah, they were able to take things home, yeah.
That's good. Great, okay, well, thank you. I got to see, I think, at Crocker, you had, this group that had the forest trail?
I think...
That's Miss Tregony. Okay, so this is a different group, this is a group that didn't go to the beach. Paul...
I went to the beach.
Mr. Quinto went to the beach.
And also, yes, Sally was kind to Mr. Jokla.
Yes.
All right.
And I just, a quickie comment, all of you guys, have you seen this slideshow before? Have you seen these slides before? They're pretty great.
No.
Wow. Let me tell you, each of you spoke so well to all of us, because I know I know some of you from being at Rhinegold and South Street, but you may not know everyone at the table. We are so proud of you. I can feel everyone at this table saying, wow, you did a great job. You really did, thank you.
Thank you to your parents, there are a lot of parents out here. Thank you for taking the time.
Absolutely.
I know, it means your schedule, you come home from work, you try to feed everybody, get them in a car, drive them here, and then the evening continues, so we really appreciate you coming. And now, we're going to have, Miss Tregony's going to come up and talk about Camp Sun.
Watch the coin, Molly.
They speak better than I do.
Isn't that little guy adorable?
It's interesting that the group that I brought, they're all siblings, so if you ask one, they can be...
They'll answer for each other, right?
Yeah. So, the Camp Sun program runs at Crocker Elementary School as well. Girls, you can come up and find a space. We run along with the Journey's program, we actually share busing, okay? One of the differences is that our grant, our summer program is funded through the Twenty-First Century After-School Program, so we have a little bit of different focus. I have a great, great appreciation for Ms. Kelly and the field trips that she planned. This was the first year this summer that we planned a field trip. We actually went to a place in Shirley that I'm sure a lot of people don't know about, but it's called Far and Near. It's hiking trails, and they have a pine antum, which is a pine field of hundreds of different types of pine trees. They have open fields, they have a beautiful facility, you'll see it in the slideshow. But just the logistics of planning a field trip for 106 students, and making sure that they're all active and busy during the course of the day, we extended one day as well, planning lunches and activities. We had a group out hiking with the wildlife sanctuary people that come in, so they hiked, and then that group would flip-flop with the group that was behind. The group that was behind had some other activities that they were participating in. So, while I set up the slideshow, each of the girls are going to introduce to you their themselves, and then they'll tell you what activity they participated in. We had nine different activities for them to choose from. They choose two, and then we have another activity, well, at the end of the day, we have what's called a mix-it-up block, and the reason that we do that is for students that may see something, like they may see the STEM group creating kites, and they don't get a chance to do that, because that's not the activity that they sign up for, but in the mix-it-up block, they can choose that, and that day, they can make kites. So, I have an amazing staff of teachers that work in the program during the school year, they also work in the summer program as well, have professionals, we have an inclusive program for all of our students. We try to focus on building relationships and a sense of community, we try to keep our group sizes small, one to 10 ratio, so that the students get a lot of attention, they build a lot of relationships. So, they're going to, there's a good little mix here of all the different activities. So, I'm going to let them introduce themselves, they can tell you about which activities they chose, and some of their favorite things about Camp Sun. Want to start with Madison, our youngest?
Hi, I'm Madison, and I go, I'm in third grade, and I go to Rhinegold Elementary School. This is my first year at Camp Sun, and I had a great time. I was in drama and creative minds. I learned in drama that you can just be yourself, because everyone's safe there, and in creative minds, I learned that just be creative.
Wow, pretty good.
Next.
My name's Devon, and I did Catch the Wind and Garden to Table, and, and, like, in Catch the Wind, you did, like, windmills and anometers, and in Garden to Table, you did gardening and cooking.
Hi, I'm Gracie Cavalo. I've gone to Camp Sun for five years. I go to Memorial Middle School. This year, in Camp Sun, I did drama and creative minds. What I liked about drama class was that everybody was friendly to each other, and when we had our roles for our script, everybody was included, and everybody was talking to each other, and you could make new friends. Also, in creative minds, we would do a lot of activities like painting, and we'd learn the science behind art.
I'm Bella Cavalo, and I did drama and creative minds, and yeah.
Okay, who's next?
I'm Lysia Gallo, and this year at Camp Sun, I did nature art and slash recycled art, and I did a video project. And with the video project, what we did was make a video for students who are new to the Pittsburgh School District, to make them feel welcome to their new school.
Wow.
Hi, my name is Eliza Gallo, and what I did this year for Camp Sun is Garden to Table and Creative Minds. In Garden to Table, we, what we basically did is we went to the garden, and like, we took care of it, and then we went inside to cook. And then in Creative Minds, we, like, got to, like, look at these paintings and, like, art sculptures, and so then, we tried to make it, make our own, and like, we had to see, like, how it was, like, like, we had to compare it, so, yeah, I like that.
Hi, I'm Kayla Zdowski, and this year at Camp Sun, I was a CIT, so I did CIT training for one of my blocks, and then I helped with technology for the other one, and I liked how we all got to help each other, figure out how to help the kids, and what we could do to improve their, how they liked Camp Sun.
Hi, my name is Paul Reedy, and I was also CIT. I'm in eighth grade at Memorial Middle School, and I also ran, like, I didn't run a club, I helped out doing dance with, in drama, with Michelle, but she wasn't able to make it. In CIT, in the CIT program, we learned how to, like, do CPR, CPR, and, yeah, I feel like I had a lot of fun this summer.
What's CIT?
Counselor in Training.
Counselor in Training?
Yeah.
Sure, thank you.
Hi, so I'm Carla Gertens, I'm in eighth grade also, and I'm from Memorial Middle School. I was also CIT, and basically, with the CIT, we learned how to, like, introduce ourselves to the kids, be friendly, and like, what will make them, like, feel more comfortable around us. We also learned how to do first aid and CPR, and we also learned how to become certified babysitters, which means, like, we can babysit friends and family, and they can feel safe, and we're also open for, like, school-wide events to help out.
I'm Keenan Duvall, and I'm a freshman at the church high, and I was also CIT this summer. I had a lot of fun being a CIT. We did a lot of things, like they already explained, we became certified in CPR and first aid, which, that was an interesting experience, it was a good thing to learn, I think, and then we learned how to interact with kids, you know, be, like, form relationships with kids and friendships, and, yeah, it was, it was a fun experience, so I'm glad I did it.
So, part of the Camp, part of the Twenty-First Century requirement is to do service learning projects? So, the CIT, the Counselor in Training, was a service learning? So, what they did is, they were going to learn the skills to be counselors in training anyways, so they decided, while they're learning those skills, they may as well learn what it would be like to be babysitters. So, they researched, what does that take? And they actually put in more hours than a regular first aid, I mean, a regular babysitting course that you would take through an organization, they actually put in 64 total hours.
Wow.
So, they researched, you know, what is a zero- or three-month-old need? What is a six-to-12-month-old need? They actually went down into the preschool and observed the younger children, they practiced changing diapers, I mean, they did the whole purpose, and they also interviewed Eva Kelly to see what the need might be in the, in the school community. So, a lot of times, we have family events, but they're not well-attended as we'd like to, because there's younger siblings at home, or there may be a need for babysitters. So, there's 13 students that are now trained in babysitting and counselors in training, and they can help out at school-wide events.
Wow.
So, they just are available, and if you have an event and you think that babysitting might be a need, you can reach out to the superstudent. So, that was the part of the service learning. The second part, there was another service learning project that Lucia was talking about, that video that she did, that they did, I'll show you it real quick, it's not even a minute long. But this was another group of students, they had a curriculum that they had to implement around a service learning project, and they chose to do video production. So, they met with Bonnie Bear Simak, and she felt it was a need to welcome students to the district, so...
Welcome to Pittsburgh Public Schools. Your parents are succeeding. Kids come to school in many different ways. Most students come to school on the bus, some are dropped off by their parents, and others walk to school. Usually, the principals are there to keep you and make you feel welcome. The office staff is there to help you. You'll get your schedule, and they will make sure you get to your class. All the students and teachers are friendly and make you feel welcome. There's another, there's other helpful people in the school that care about you, too. You will always have a friend to be with. There are many activities you can join in making new friends. You can participate in art, children, drama, and many other activities. Finally, you are done for the day, and you get to go home. See, that wasn't that bad. See you tomorrow.
That's great. Good job.
That video was also in Spanish as well, so there's a Spanish version, it's the same video, but it's been spoken in Spanish, and that was the group of students that worked on that.
So, where is that video housed now?
It is on the website.
Okay.
Not the Pittsburgh Public Schools, it's on Bonnie's website.
Oh, cool.
We need to get it to FATV, because they would, they would run that.
Okay.
Yeah.
If I could, may I, so, the Journey's program services about 100 students in grades K. So, we had a class of very young, just turned five-year-olds to six-year-olds through third grade, and then the Twenty-First Cent, and that's funded through Title I. Twenty-First Century program kicks it up a notch, so the Journey's is really an academic program through Title I, looking at model curriculum, strong literacy development, and experiences. Twenty-First Century has arts and STEM focus, and that's grades three through upper elementary, early middle, with the Counselor in Training program that provides something different for the middle school students. And this year, 106 kids? Yeah, yep. Both programs are integrated, including special education students with disabilities, second language learners... second language learners. It's, and we usually have a waiting list for both programs.
Thank you. Questions?
Just, let me ask something. I always see um, on discussing Pittsburgh, people looking for babysitters. And I don't know if there is some kind of a place that people can call the school to get this information? Or maybe you can put it on FATV saying that they're a certified babysitter and you know, contact whatever school they belong to? Because there's always people looking for babysitters, you know, for a couple of hours a day and I mean, if you're certified, who better to take care of somebody's child as a babysitter?
The um, the certification that, that they, that they went through was through the, through the 21st Century Program. So you can do like, a first, uh, what do they call it? American Heart Association or one of those programs, you can do it online. But there was a fee related to it. It was like a hundred and thirty dollars per student to do it. So we looked at what that looked like and then um, Kim Belio addressed that and more. So it's, it's, I don't want to say it's a certification because we don't actually give them, but they, they're, I would say that they're beyond the experience that you would get from taking that class. Because they did above and beyond, the diapering, the um, observation, the skills, the research alone on what, what to do with kids, books to read, at what levels. I mean, they really, they really explored a lot about what it takes to um, care for a child. And had the babysit, the uh, the CPR and choking. I mean, one of the school nurses came in and actually had what was called a choke vest. So you reach around somebody and actually do the Heimlich and it spits out a piece of foam. So the kids could actually live practice the Heimlich maneuver, which was really cool. And the CPR, they're all, they're all certified in CPR and first aid. So that's where the certification comes in. But an actual babysitting certification, yeah, not.
Well, I don't know if people are looking for that specifically, but just that they've already had training and.
Right, I would say that there, there's thirteen of them and they're very, very qualified. So I would think, you know, maybe one of the steps that they could have done was to put out a brochure and maybe have that available at the schools um, that they can contact.
Did they have resumes with Miss Dally? I'm not sure what she did at that, but.
Each student did their own resume with their experience, experience. Yeah, so I mean, it's the, the experience that they got was really above and beyond, I think. It was great.
Yes.
Um, do you, so now that you've done the CIT training, is that it for the camp? Or can you come back? Or like, how does it work?
Um, what happens next year is the students that already went through the CIT training can come back as volunteers if they choose to. We have two students right now that are sophomores in high school that still come back and volunteer their time. Um, they went through the CIT program when they were there. So they can come back as volunteers and now they're above. And then there's new students like um, Gracie and Bella who'll be going into seventh grade and they'll be becoming CITs. So it's a, it kind of repeats itself as a, as, and some of these um, students have been in the camp for five years now. So yeah, they look forward to that piece. They, like, it's something they want to achieve is to become a CIT.
Any further questions?
Well, thank you so much. Thank you again. Thanks to the parents for getting you here, okay? Congratulations.
Approval of the minutes in the regular school committee meeting of October 3rd, 2016.
Take a motion, we approve them.
Motion made to approve. Go ahead, your second.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We will be going into executive session at the close of the meeting. Any new business?
Ask the superintendent, could, our next meeting before the election, could we have something about charter schools on the agenda? So we could discuss charter schools? Because there is so much misinformation that is out there. Um, it'd be nice to have a, a discussion and so people could learn what's really happening when they talk about charter schools. The public schools getting more money? Well, the public charter schools are getting more money, but the local schools are losing it all. You know, just a lot of things that have come up. Even the Sentinel today, they had, they're looking to pass uh, twelve new charter schools a year. And the Sentinel said the state uh, could have a hundred and twenty charter schools and there are only seventy-two. So what's uh, what's that, about forty-eight charter schools? That could still be opened in the state of Massachusetts?
Yeah, I'll put it on the agenda for the next agenda.
Yeah.
I also.
Uh, any unfinished business from previous, oh, I'm sorry.
Um, I'm just wondering, at the next um, school building needs meeting? I'm not in that um, group, but when we were doing the calling all scarecrows, we realized that um, a lot of the schools did not have sufficient tools to do a lot of the jobs at the schools, like hammers, screwdrivers, things like that, that we were looking for. So I'm wondering if somehow, somebody can take an inventory of what the facilities people have to work with and make sure that they have full sets of tools that if something happens, that they can do their job. I mean, we had the most difficult time trying to find a hammer.
Okay. You know, there used to be a lot of that material, but over the years.
Yeah, but you can't do your job if you don't have the tools and, you know.
Yeah, let me look into that because it, it doesn't necessarily line up with what, with what I know is the case, so.
Okay, all right.
Let me look into it.
All right.
Any, any other questions? Uh, communications.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to suggest, I was gonna mention that I'm happy to report that on behalf of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, Board of Directors, uh, our own Mr. Peter Stevens has been the recipient of the MACAC's Division Four All-State School Committee 2016 Award. This honor recognizes his contributions to the children of Pittsburgh, both through your years of service on the school committee and through the many activities in which you have participated as an advocate for children, not to mention all those years as a principal and administrator in the school system. The award will be presented at the MACAC Leadership Awards Dinner on Friday, November 4th, uh, and their joint conference. The dinner is being held at the Resort and Conference Center IAS. I want to congratulate you, Peter.
Thank you.
Thank you for all that. So, how'd you get it?
Well, I think it has a lot to do with my work with caps and special needs students.
There you go. Good for you.
That's great.
Uh, yeah, yes.
Um, I've got a, a quick communication. So last Thursday at eight-thirty in the morning, um, a number of us went to downtown Leominster, where their school committee has indeed just passed a resolution with the exception of their mayor. Their mayor abstained from voting on it. But school committee members there feel very strongly that we do not want more charter schools. And so um, Mike Hurley, myself, Heather Mazafaro on the school committee, and Natalia Birthday, who works with our public school uh, teachers, we all did a standout in downtown Leominster. I know folks have jobs, you know, eight-thirty in the morning, but we'll be there next Thursday and then we will be there, uh, I believe that is the, uh, the Thursday, the twenty-seventh as well. And after that, we went and spoke to every single business in downtown Leominster and the message was simple. If this, if, if, if you don't, if, if you, if you vote no, you are supporting your town. If this bill passes, well, that's gonna affect adversely the public schools, which will adversely affect Leominster, which will make a difference in your, in your businesses. So we probably talked to thirty separate small businesses, owners, workers, everyone. And we had a couple of, you know, not more than a couple of people saying, wow, I, I hadn't thought about it that way. But that is the truth. If, if question, if question two does pass, it will have a devastating effect on Pittsburgh schools and subsequently, the city of Pittsburgh and our surrounding communities. So very serious stuff. If you want to come stand out with us, it will be Thursday um, in front of, just downtown Leominster at eight-thirty. We did have a wonderful canvas. Uh, Beth was there, Jean was there, um, Pete was there, or no, um, Claudia was there. You were, you were an alumni. Marisa was there. The mayor was there. Wana, you, we, anyway, a bunch, a bunch of us were there. And I think we did something like over three hundred houses got spoken to. So that's a lot of good canvassing and I hope that we can keep this up. I know we're over a hundred and eighty school committees across the state that say vote no on question two and thank you, Mr. Stevens, for bringing it up to put on our agenda. Uh, we have one more school committee meeting before Election Day and it's absolutely crucial that the public hear from us. Um, the only coverage the Sentinel has given that has been pro-charter has been from people working for charter school industries. So Great Schools Massachusetts and Sabas Corporation. That's where the editorials came from, not from citizens, not from parents.
And that, just right, that's why we need the discussion. The, the superintendent sent us another good uh, article on, from the conference you just went to. Uh, and they talk about, and it also brings up the vocational technical schools. What people don't realize, when we get an assessment from the city, the, the vocational technical schools assess the city and then the city gets a five percent cut in their funding, they still get their assessment. They don't have to make the cuts. You know, they, uh, charter schools, they're gonna get so much per pupil. Uh, we lose the money, they're still gonna get their per pupil expenditure. We have to make the cuts. They don't. We continue to lose money. Uh, from the auditor, uh, for this past year, uh, we got from the state four hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, and we paid out uh, two and a half million. The difference was like a million, eight hundred and fifty thousand. So I'd like to know where that extra money for our local public schools is coming from because we're not getting it. So I, that's why we need this discussion.
And I would ask that we need the talent of, of a city, right? We want, that's the job of the public schools, to educate everybody. And we want people to commit to these public schools. So that's how you make things better. That's how you really raise the bar for everybody. And our schools are great schools. So I think it's just a, it's, it's money, it's talent, it's support for the city, it's support for the kids. It's, it's really committing to what the whole public idea is meant to be. We educate everybody.
Well said, everyone. Thank you. I think you all know my position on charter schools. I've been an opponent of additional charter schools in Pittsburgh since I was a legislator. So that's not changing and it will not change. Mr. Superintendent, you, your report, um, recognitions?
Nothing, just write on to budget items.
All right, good. Thank you.
So budget items, we have a donation uh, for McKinney-Bento, which is for, to help our homeless students. And it is school supplies, backpacks, hygiene items. And it's for eight hundred and fifty uh, dollars. And it's from the UMass Health Alliance, uh, the Leominster campus. Thank you. Uh, then there's a donation of a singer sawing machine with cabinet and box of approximately forty-five schools of thread. Very specific. Uh, for a hundred and twenty-five dollars and that's to be used in the 21st Century Program. Uh, and that is um, from Ms. Carolyn Patton of Westminster, Mass. Uh, and then we have um, recommended action. Uh, and that is for the um, this is the grant?
Grants.
Yep, the grant. Uh, and this one is accepting, recommending, recommending a grant. Museum of Science Travel for a thousand and fifty and a museum, a mass life sciences center grant for a hundred and fifty thousand. So these are grants that are coming before you to be recommended. You will see on the um, on the action items, uh, maybe I'll turn to Bob Jokola since he has been the lead on this. Uh, we are gonna have solar panels soon, so. If the sun also rises.
Not conplastic or whatever we're talking. The sun will rise tomorrow. Yeah, the city solicitor, Vincent Fustieri, and I have been uh, finalizing the contract with a vendor called Select Energy, who was introduced to the city under the Power Options Program. Uh, we're a power options customer. Uh, this program um, that is approved by the state under which Power Options participates allows members, municipalities, nonprofits to go through an expedited procurement and contractual process to install small-scale solar facilities. So um, we've been negotiating for last month or so. Uh, we retained a consultant to make sure we got the best deal possible for the city. And uh, we'll be going before the city council tomorrow night to get their blessing. Uh, as a contract term, uh, is twenty years and exceeds the, the regular maximum of five years.
What time's it tomorrow night, Bob?
Seven o'clock. You know, based on the projections, we estimate first-year savings of around ninety thousand. Uh, over the lifetime of the projects, uh, the city could save two point seven, two point eight million dollars uh, with an average savings of around a hundred thirty thousand. So, you know, it's, it's a great opportunity for the city to uh, go green. And when I say go green, this is not only environmentally, but also financially, so.
That's great.
It's a good thing for the schools and I thank the city solicitor um, for helping us out on this.
Bob's worked closely with city purchasing, the city solicitor, that this, the, these are very complex things to work out and uh, we're glad that we're, they were finally right there.
Solicitors here tonight too. I want to thank Bob. You did yeoman's work on this and as well as the solicitor. A.J. Terigney in my office was uh, was a participant as well. And you know, something we can't lose sight of is the projected cost savings can be reallocated to direct student services.
Right.
It goes back to the kids, right?
That's right. That's the best part. Thanks.
That's the best part. Right. Thank you.
That's really a sunshine fund.
Yes.
We have, just to people out there who may not remember, um, quite a few years ago now, Bonnie Bear Simak, RELL Director, worked with a group of teachers and uh, created some curriculum units that were uh, purchased by Pearson Publishing. And uh, we get these royalty checks on a regular basis. Uh, and we're uh, receiving a royalty check tonight for four hundred and seven dollars and eighty-one cents, which you need to receive and approve. Um, then uh, we're asking you to make an allocation of school choice funds. We were contacted by uh, John Thompson from South Street Elementary Schools. They were in need of some chairs. Um, so we're purchasing a hundred Columbia adjustable stack chairs for South Street at a cost of three thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars and that would be from school choice. You have uh, the approval of a policy, a drug, alcohol, and tobacco policy, which was discussed earlier on your action items also, and that's it.
Thank you.
May I just ask?
Yes, questions, yes.
Question about policy? Um, so just in the uh, back part of it, of the policy, the second page, it says that the materials, the curriculum, the instruction materials should be recommended by the superintendent approved by the school committee. So is that, I mean, I, I understand that this is really more just the framework of needing that kind of policy. Is that, is any of that changing, the curriculum or the instruction material? That's all the same material we have in place, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, where are we? Curriculum instruction? Public testimony? Is there any public testimony? Seeing none? We're voting on the action items? Want to take them together?
Seven thirty-eight, seven thirty-nine can be together.
All right.
Make the motion?
Motion made to approve.
Second.
Sixteen, seven thirty-eight, sixteen, seven thirty-nine. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Sixteen, seven forty.
Motion due.
Museum of Science Traveling Program grant is motion to accept.
Second.
Motion made in second to accept. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Pro- super recommendation to endorse the execution of twenty-year purchase power agreement?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it is unanimous. Approve the superintendent's recommendation to accept four hundred and seven dollars and seven cents of royalty from Pearson Education.
Motion to accept.
Motion made in seconded to accept. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Sixteen, seven forty-three. Superintendent recommendation to invest up to three million five hundred and Opposed, sixteen, seven forty-three, superintendent recommendation to invest up to three million five hundred and sixty, fifty-sixty.
Three thousand.
Oh, three, three thousand.
Three.
Three million.
A lot of chairs.
Uh, I added a zero, I'm sorry.
Or two.
Do we have that much in school choice? I think we do, don't we?
Remember that when you're doing our budget.
I'll add a couple of zeros, yeah. Purposes of one hundred Columbia adjustable stack chairs. Motion to buy.
All right, all, motion made seconded, all in favor? Okay, approve the superintendent recommendation to teaching, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, sure, so this is, uh, so uh, policy subcommittee, um, motion to ex, uh, sorry, motion to pass the teaching and intervention drugs, alcohol, and tobacco um, policy?
Motion.
Motion made, second?
I'll, yep.
Second.
All in favor, aye. And now, um, Mr. Chair, go, go right ahead.
Okay. We're all set, the, the last on the, on the agenda, sixteen, seven forty-five, superintendent's reg.
No, no, we have to do forty-four.
I thought we just did, no.
That was a subcommittee.
Yeah.
Oh.
Committee now, we gotta do it.
Oh, that's a subcommittee, okay. To approve the superintendent recommendation, to approve the teaching and intervention drugs, alcohol, and tobacco.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Now the last one, sixteen, seven forty-five, superintendent's.
Make a motion to pay the bills.
All right, motion made. Seconded, all in favor, aye. Uh, we're now going to adjourn to convene an executive session.
Make a motion, we're going to executive session for the purpose of litigation.
Right.
And uh, only to return to adjourn.
Exactly. Motion made.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, all right, do we have two?
Individual?
Do we need to?
Roll call.
Roll call?
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Yes, is unanimous. Are we staying here or?
No.